This conference will now be recorded.
Mayor Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Gandy.
Here.
Mr. Trupillo.
Here.
Mr. Bo.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
You'll join me in prayer. Father God, let me just want to first of all say thank you for the moisture you've so blessedly given us this past couple of days and this past that you continue to give as much as we need. I know that it's a godsend to our ranchers, farmers, and of course to all of us as we've endured a very hot and drop of sun. We know that you have a plan and we rely on you and trust in your plan, but also so thankful that you were able to really lead it. Father God, we also want to ask you to join us in this meeting through us, you impart wisdom, you impart good decisions. Father, that you give us the ability to help further our community, to bring our community together and just use us as the standard that we may be examples for everyone and as we strive to make this the best community that's possible. Father God, we just thank you for continuing to bless our nation and we just ask that you be with believing in the film of our nation there too. Finally, Father, we just want to thank you for being the example to us and allowing us to worship you and to use your word in everything that we do. In Jesus Christ name we pray. Join me in prayer. I pray to the Lord. In the name of the Lord. To the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, in the name of its God. I salute the flag standing in Mexico as the native people of American trenches among united cultures.
I'd like to make a motion. Make a motion to. May the.
Here we have a motion to. Do you want to read the changes first in your agenda?
I would like to remove the resolution 2022-08 or through resolution 2022-091.
A second. Yeah, a motion to remove the action items from the agenda. Any discussion? Okay, if not, Shannon, oh, yeah, good.
Did you say 083? Not the first and not the last, everything in it.
Eight, four, all the way.
Four through 091, 091. Yes, I'm sorry. Your call. Okay, um, Mr. Gandy.
Yeah.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Trupillo.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion for seven of the minutes of August 8, 2022. Here we have a motion, second consideration and adoption of minutes. Any discussion? Not, Shannon, we'll call things.
Mr. Trupillo.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. White. Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Ah, yes. So now I'm going to. Stand up for every other. I'd like to introduce Mr. Parker Jermaine Evans. Whereas Parker Jermaine Evans has won seven to nine year old at growing idol, the Youth Bull Riders World Finals. And whereas Parker's perseverance to be great earned him to be selected as one of the five riders in his age division from the Texas Outlaws Youth Bull Riding to compete at the Youth Bull Riders World Finals. And whereas Parker's success is a beacon of inspiration for all youth to work hard to reach their goals. Whereas Parker has represented his community well by proving his ability to excel by winning the Youth Bull Riders World Finals in Appleton, Texas. Now therefore, I, Howard Roberts, Mayor of Love, New Mexico, hereby proclaim August 22nd of 2022 as Parker Jermaine Evans' Day throughout the city of Love. Y'all will join me in an applause for this. Do you want to congratulate me? Again, obviously well deserved. I believe we want to wish you continued success. The hope that you will make a decision upon this. And just thank you for being so passionate about your work. Anyway. And this is your final. Go on, she wants to say bye-bye.
You want to hold me there?
Yeah, me to go. Really? That's the champion? And we gave him a sitting ovation? I think he could already stand. Even though we changed it up just. As Mayor Bo Tim today, I am going to end you over the gap. We will be leaving that for the rest of the evening. I'm going to recuse myself originally because we're going to have a vote on a subject that I've been very close to and as a board member, one of the participants, one of the recipients, I was going to recuse myself from any vote on this. I'm still going to. Mr. Trupillo will finish out the meeting and we will proceed. Appreciate you. I would like to be part of the discussion.
Okay, moving on to Commissioner and staff report. Chen.
I'm getting ready to report tonight.
Chris and Trup.
Yes, um, I just wanted to report that we are fixing to do budget periods, I believe, September the 6th, 7th, and 8th, and we're going to deal with the department heads just to kind of get a feel where everybody's at and kind of see what's going on there. Also, um, we're getting ready to start our audit process and his team will be down to audit those full stuff and make sure that stuff's going the way that it needs to go to get it to the audit. Our goal is to have everything to them by September the 30th. That's our goal right now. So we have to have everything turned in by December for the audit.
I had one, Chris had mentioned to you earlier, also City Manager, that I don't believe that we've had a signature change for the checks and so forth, and I don't think it's been brought to the board. If it has, then maybe I just missed it, but can we double check on that? Make sure we have who's on the signature card for the checks and so forth? I don't think it's been brought to the board. I could be wrong, but I remember recalling, I know we made numbers changes, but I don't think it's been presented to the board. And then, second of all, uh, City Manager, I'm okay, did you get any type of feedback on that?
Uh, Mr. Bo Tim, members of the commission, I did meet with Patrick and he did indicate to me that we would receive approximately $32,000. Now, that money that we receive will have to be used for specific opulent programs. So I did meet with police chief and so what our attorney will do is he'll submit the letter and once we receive the funding, the police chief will address the specific funding and how that is going to be tied to.
Today I forward you, I don't know if you saw that, that we have not set up the account yet, so make sure.
Members of the commission, yes, I did receive that email and I did speak to Patrick and we'll definitely get that out and we will receive that.
Chief, Maran.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager, we've had one officer leave the Lee County Sheriff's Office in the past two weeks. It is the first officer to leave the Sheriff's Office in approximately one year. That means of 28 sworn officer positions, we have 18 filled, which is a 64% rate in 10 openings, and we are currently authorized to hire three officers. We have switched out our training and recruitment sergeant and will aggressively continue the hires. A week ago, two of our commissioners along with the city manager toured some of our operational cleanup sites to view the progress that is being made. I have left an update for the three commissioners that weren't able to join, just so you can see our progress. We received our new code enforcement even on Friday, which was funded by Lee County. Thanks again to Commissioner Rebecca Long. We are anticipating the delivery of six new fully equipped patrol units in the next couple of weeks, all of which were purchased using outside funding. I don't think I have any separate questions.
Any question, Butler?
Thank you. Chief, as you may remember, the commission, so like the police department, we have had one employee who resigned. He was living in Lovett just to commute and the taxes in the state are just too much for him, so he resigned. We have got one application, a certified fire one, fire two, and he has had his intermediate empty license in the past. He's going to see if we can get that back. We have received a grant that's going to pay for three sets of structural firefighter armor gear and then eight sets of wattlet gear. Our entire department, as far as fire, we attended a three day wattlet class last week. That's why we were out of pocket all week. We have tested all of our fire hose, so that's all up to date. That hasn't been done in about four years. Our SCBA's, the bottles will be hydrotested on the 30th. There again, that's something that hasn't been done in quite a few years. And then on the 24th, our air packs will be inspected and any maintenance completed through the outside company. And on the 25th, our whole department will be fit tested for our SCBA's because we've had new people, be glued to it, and get in better shape. So all that has to be fit tested. Other than that, I do not have anything. I'll just have three questions.
Any questions, Butler?
Excuse me, I don't know if you know this, but that would require me to sit here for three years. So we have to do that.
It hasn't been done, that's why I'm trying to.
Oh, no, that's good. I'm glad you're on.
Commissioner. Yes, I know I always say eat local, shop local, buy local. Last week, a gentleman come up to me and asked me why I put that out there. If I do what you're saying, six days a week, I said it all, so you'll love it. And I'm not putting it out there to be mean or anything. It's your prerogative, whatever you want to do. You can go wherever you want, doesn't have to be Lovington. I put it out there, Lovington first, because I want people, before you decide to go to Habs or go to Lovett or whatever, if you can get something here, get something here. It helps out the community, it helps out the people here in that community, helps out all of us. So I'm not telling people what to do, I'm just putting it out there and I know it gets old, you're going to be saying it every week or every other week, but I said I'm going to do it and I'm going to stick to my work. So I want to have people shop local, buy local, eat local, it helps out everybody. So if you don't want to, as again I said, that's your prerogative, you want to go somewhere else, that's fine, so be it. I'm just trying to look out for the community. Now, I don't know, went out to see some of the places where operation cleanup and I commend everybody that's involved in that. Very, very good. And I wanted to find out, and I understand that the funding that was there this was from the sale of vehicles and city equipment. I want to find out in the future if there's some way that we can see about getting some fund dates for this program, this program doesn't go away because it's really making a difference. A lot of people from the community are poisoned, put opinions on it. You even have people that are getting the roll offs to their places that are helping out clean up because they've had their time, so whatever. So I really applaud that it's making the difference and I don't want to see.
Thank you, Mr. Vic. Mr. Gandy.
Yeah, you say it every two weeks, I hear you, but you're right. Every dollar that's spent in Lovington goes further. If you shop local, use your local businesses, they support your programs, that money goes to our streets, our water, our sure, our city employees, it has a bigger turnover. If you go to Walmart or wherever you are, they have a larger selection. If you're in an absolute bind, I mean, I have certain products I have to buy outside of the city because Grove does not have a business here, but you're right, the more we spend here in Lovington, the more we support each other in the growth of our own businesses, then it looks more profitable to people outside and they want to come here, you know? And if we don't shop here, nobody wants to come here. You're correct in your thinking, but other than that, I don't.
Thank you. Mr. Gandy.
Nothing to mention, sir.
City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, I have nothing to report, but I stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, we did meet with Patrick actually the next day. He did make contact with the railroad and so the railroad and DOT will start working on the tracks on the Lovington highway. And then we will partner with the railroad on Avenue R and they will pay half and we will pay half and we will start that process. And I shouldn't have additional information to present other than this mission.
Thank you. Chris.
Um, I'll have a couple of things in the discussion items that we'll go over. I just wanted to say, been working with the chief police and code enforcement on doing the asbestos inspections on those properties, forest cleanup. Okay, the last one had no asbestos in it, so that was a positive. It helps to, it helps that I can do those inspections because they cost thousands of dollars when I can turn around and do them just within the city. It's just my brain, but it helps the city be able to do these projects a lot better than if I can't do that. But it's going well. We're going to do another inspection pretty soon on another one and that's where I was also looking at next year, we actually budgeted something and looked for grants, but actually put in a budget. I know the city of Artigia does budget for these type of inspections and demolition of vacant buildings like this that we need to go with.
Any questions? Chris, I just want to say thank you. Legal counsel?
Nothing for legal question.
But, uh, final word, I'd like to say something about our mayor, Robert Roberts. He's here every day and I commend him greatly. I, when I see his truck here, it makes me smile because he's dedicating himself to the city of Love. It might be 30 minutes, it might be an hour. I might not always agree with him, don't get me wrong, but I guarantee you, it's a hard thing to count, you know, because he's making a big effort and I think he keeps us all informed and I just want to say. Moving on to Commissioner's staff reports, I mean, I'm sorry, there you go. Anybody like to say anything or comment? Yes, go ahead.
And Commissioners, I would like to say also with the cleanup, I'm very pleased. I have been for, I don't have to tell you how many years I've been complaining about certain addresses, but today I gave a thumbs up on Sixth Street and Tyler, no, my daughter, but anyway. I'm really pleased to see that happening. It's been such an eyesore for so long. Another thing that I would like to bring up, you talk about shopping in Lovington and there's one thing that I have noticed, we don't have on signage in the main street area about our businesses that are off to the side or down Main Street, and I think this is very important. Yes, we got the signs for the city hall and for the courthouse, but most people know where those are, but we have businesses up and down Washington and Central that need signage. Now with the new construction on Main Street, some of those black lazy sicks and smarty pants and then those on Central and Washington, we need to make sure we get signage because if we don't have it, people don't know anything is there. And another thing I really think, and this is something that I have mentioned to the chamber, I think I've mentioned it to many people, but I really think that we as citizens need, or the business owners here, especially our restaurants, need to think about how they close all the time, early in the evenings. I've noticed that except for Baja, some evenings, there's no restaurants open in this town. And I think it's something to talk about as far as our grocery receipts tax. I think it's, you have to make them aware. I know it's hard to get employees, I know it's hard for them to work layoffs, but it's something that I feel possibly as EDC, the chamber and Main Street, try to work with these people, talk to them about the importance of being open. And on Saturdays, you gotta go to Hogs and now Payton's even giving it a reminder on Saturday night. So like I said, it's something that I've been concerned about and I think about an awful lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, I just wanted to remind everyone, like Commissioner Bolton earlier, to shop local. As you guys may have seen, we did do a shop local campaign on August 4th, we're loving to Main Street pay for advertising on radio, Facebook, newspaper, and flyers to promote our downtown businesses and encourage everyone to come out and actually support them. Additionally, we just closed up our facade improvement grant, which that money can be used for business signage and we're really excited. We actually ended up with four different applicants and we'll be able to see all of our awardees later this week. So just to remind you guys to shop local and again, we have lots of different opportunities for all of community, for our shop local promotion, we actually gave away a $50 credit to water, gas, as well as two $50 gift cards to again use them back in our downtown businesses. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. I'm Roger Roberts. Division of the 30th District of Loving. And I've had the opportunity to attend these meetings by regular since about April the 11th. Anyway, so I wanted to just bring up a few things that I see and I'm going to, the first thing I want to do is I'm going to recognize the group of people that are here. This group of people come to me nearly every day. Different people, they're not all here, but they, they basically pray for this commission. And I'm here to tell you that because of that, I'm able to do what I want to do or I want, and I would like to see that as well. First thing I want to do is I want to applaud the managers that we have in the city of Love. The department managers that have taken this job and most of them are no more experienced at their current position than I am in life. And yet, we have made strides because of their love and dedication for the city. You know, we couldn't turn on our faucet every day, we couldn't flush our toilet every day. We would be, we possibly could be driving through puddles. We wouldn't feel safe at night in our bed. We wouldn't be able to be secure that if our house got on fire that something would be salvaged. We wouldn't have programs for our elderly and we wouldn't have the ability for animals. Ours and abandoned animals to be taken off the streets and cared for if at all possible, found a new home and all of that and comes from a city that unites and works together. I want to applaud our city manager. Because I'm not jokingly, I'm going to say he's not very smart, but as a smart man would not have been. With the challenges that were before, you know? And I get to work with you every day. And a lot of that's going to be coming to what I'm fixing to ask you to do. I'm going to challenge you to be as involved as you can. I have a question, what have you done for your district today, this week, this month, or even the beginning of this year? What have you done for your city as commissioners in that same country here? You know, there are a lot of commissions around the country that basically rely on the, on the city manager to bring everything to them for them to act upon, for them to use his conduit and they need to sit up there and vote. Well, I'm asking you not to be that commissioner. I'm asking you to take involvement in the city organizations, in our auxiliary entities, and we're going to be discussing with those here in just a little while. And I'm asking you to be a part of these groups that typically, my friend's fine example, she's, she's doing things to help improve our city, to help our youth, and she's just one of them. There, we have several entities and civic organizations that do this every day. You know, people ask me, what has Lovington done for our youth lately? What have they done for our elderly? I'm giving, I'm putting the challenge out to us to be involved and make sure that we're involved in all of these processes. You know, it's, a couple of us have been up here less than six months. Some of us have been up here less than a year, two and a half years, some of us have been here a while. And I know you've seen a lot, if you've been here a good time, you've seen a lot and you've been asked of a lot. Now I'm asking you, first of all, put back zeal and the fire that you had when you were first elected and let's make Lovington a better community that is possible. Let's be the leaders. Let's be the leaders and let's support our city manager. And most of all, let's support our, our city employees. Because without them, we don't get to enjoy all the comforts that we have. I'm going to turn to the public and I'm going to ask you that. First of all, being involved, if you don't know your, your Commissioner's phone number, get it. If you've got something that you want to add, I'll, I'll. And they don't answer whatever phone, because I'm going to answer that. If they don't answer that phone, then I'll be, but I'll get back to you. I want you to hold us accountable. And that's what I'm here to say, that we are here to help you. You voted us in. You can vote us out. But the first thing I want you to do is we're not killing you. I want you to call us and say, hey, we need this, we need them involved, we need whatever. So this is a challenge to our community to come together and let's be with the leaders. And that's, that's my goal for Lovington. You can see I'm very passionate about that. And we are facing that, we're fixing to talk to a group of outside entities. We're going to bring up, uh, we're going to get involved right in front of the thing. And I want you to understand, before we get into this discussion, that's the reason I came out here, because I want to be on your side as we talk this. We're not trying to get any. What we want is we want like an understanding of what you're doing to help Lovington and make sure that the dollars that we are giving out to you to accomplish that are spent for the purpose that they are supposed to be. And we want to further that because there's one thing about it. I know me and how my feelings are and I pretty much know everybody out there, that we want succession, we want the next group that's sitting out there and the next group that's sitting in our position to be able to step into those positions and be, and secure in the fact that all of this has been done to protect your entities and protect the city so that you can protect the city. So this is a challenge to Lovington, to today. Let's come together. And I'm going to challenge the commission and I'm going to be a part of that. And then what we're asking them to do, we as the commission need to do with the city. We need to create and agreed upon procedures so that the next commissioners can expect and hold the city, uh, in accountable, accountable for what they do to money, uh, just like we're fixing to have this group. So, I know I ran over my three minutes, I'm surprised Jaylene hasn't told me that. But first of all, I, my biggest.
She liked her job.
Do what?
She liked her job.
I have no control over that, so that's the good part. I just want to say thanks to the people that are here, that continue to come here because everyone sitting out here has a concern. They may voice it, they may have a specific thing that night, and they may be just here to see what's going on and how we're going to continue working to see. We've got some great things coming out, guys. And for the first five months, whatever I've been here, I want to say thank you to these guys and I want to say thank you to everyone that has stepped up. And I appreciate you and I've been, I'm enjoying this. It was difficult, you know what? I'm, I'm so looking to forward forward to this.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any other public comment? There's no more public comment, moving on to non-action items. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, at this time I would like Mr. Stephen Sanders to, uh, approach the podium and present.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is Don Russell, Executive Chairman of the Tera. I am Stephen Sanders. And, uh, we, we operate a ranch north of here. And we're going to discuss just real briefly our three minutes of water and supplying potentially the city of Lovington with some very good quality potable water. And they bring it from the north side, what we talked about versus the south.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thanks so much for this opportunity to speak with you all. We have a ranch about twelve miles north, as Stephen was just saying. It is capable of, we have eleven wells that are manifolded together on that ranch. It's capable of producing eight hundred and twenty-seven million gallons of water a year for permanent for three hundred and eighty-seven million gallons of water a year. So that works out to a million and sixty thousand gallons a day. It is potable water. It's right there. We understand you're in the process of going through a water study and want to update your water plan for the years going forward. We really would like to simply make you aware that we're here. We have the water, it's right there. We're not sure exactly, I don't know that you all are quite sure this is, whether you need it on the south side of town, whether you're going to do something on the north side of town, uh, just how, where it might be delivered. We're very flexible as to how we might work together. If you do decide to go and chat with us, uh, we'd be more than happy. Well, frankly, we could sell you the ranch if you want to buy the ranch and you can do whatever you want with it. Two, we can use the water and you can come get it. Three, we can, uh, deliver it to you and you can, uh, make sure that it's, you know, take care of the processing and delivery, or we could process it and deliver it if you're ready to just be given out to the city. So we're flexible, we have the water, we are right here. And we'd love to chat with you when you all are ready and have better ideas what your plan is. So thank you for this opportunity.
Sorry, questions? We appreciate you kind of answering. Hey, Matt?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, at the same, I would like, uh, Bernard or Foreman with the water department and Mr. Justin Williams to present on our watch. And I, I believe you now form, which is at least one or two.
Hi, I'm Bernard, here at Junior, I'm a supervisor for the Water Department. A few things were brought up to me as far as, uh, what we should do. Now beforehand, before I took over, a lot of these things were looked over and weren't really, uh, priorities or big concerns. They've been brought to my attention, I feel that they are something of concern and something that we need to start looking into some more. One of the things was our, uh, the efficiency of our wells. Now, I know a lot of people here don't know that we have been having some issues. This is something that we've, uh, we've been mitigating between me and my assistant. Our SCADA has kind of been going AWOL on us. Now, we have contacted our SCADA, our SCADA rep. We're still waiting on him to get a contact back with us to get us some help. Uh, he's out of Albuquerque. Now, this is also kind of segueing to a little different section. Uh, I have gotten in contact with the wastewater foreman and speaking of maybe of going with the more local SCADA system if needed in the future. Obviously that would entail a lot of money to revamp, redo everything. Right now what I'm doing is, uh, trying to see if we can fix what we have.
Just a question, how old is our SCADA system?
That I exactly couldn't tell you, but I don't know exactly when it was installed and updated. I know for a fact it's been over ten years since I've been here.
I think you're recently adding work on, a couple of years back, two years back. Why it was here?
I want to say that ten.
Fair enough. That was specifically for the, uh, the work that was done. I think we put that out in the comments, those census.
Yeah, we had some schematics, uh, some of that issues fail on us a couple of years ago. I don't know who worked on it, but I already called the city manager. Current, uh, time, the present city manager, uh, they were, they worked on it, so I'm not too sure. I'm just saying maybe collect. I, I think, uh, wrong, what else is wrong?
I think it's the same that we're going through.
Oh, okay, right, yeah.
It's just, for the issues that we've been having, kind of regrow versus right now, we're having to go out and reset everything quite a few times, obviously.
That's why our water towers have overflowed, it's miscommunication on that.
The miscommunication, computers have been going down. Say, I've also spoken with, uh, Justin, who has brought up, maybe even have any, like a secondary, uh, computer, let's say our computer has also been giving us issues, it's been locked up, shut down to where it's, it's starting to control itself and the alarms aren't even calling us out at this, at this time. So it's basically more manual for us instead of the automated system it should be. So that's kind of what we're trying to get into possibly, uh, see what we can fix on it. As far as even like the wells, there's not a lot of records on wells to, for us to go off and kind of go and work with the, uh, with that forty-year water plant. So we're trying to, WHOH is going to help us out and look into all that, possibly even rehab and sew our, our wells for, to regain some of that capacity. And some of them, obviously that doesn't face the problem. Right now, we are maintaining with this city. We are keeping up with the man at the moment. Five years' time from now, I can probably not say the same. I know that it's kind of been hinted at in the past about, uh, possibly water conservation that kind of just puts a band-aid on. And issue that may get worse in long-term, but that is something that we're going to get into when we actually go and start rehabbing on these wells, uh, seeing how far they're getting or how bad it's gotten over time. So the numbers we've had, we want more numbers. We're going to try to get those numbers.
Justin, can you introduce yourself and introduce yourself on, on your objectives and why the city would change? Like the HB before you, uh, brought your skills up.
So I'm Justin Williams, uh, I work for WHOH, the manager there. We were approached by the city to help with the efficiency of the water field. And the overall goal is to obviously make it better, operationally efficient and try to meet the demands of the city. And so, working with Bernard and the Water Department and Dr. Martinez, we're trying to collect all the data we have about the water field. From where it cleans the ground till it gets to the tap. Of course, that's big, a pound of rhythm, but it has the angles of attack. We're trying to look at every single one of those facets. So getting back to what we have going on right here, so as far as the water field, we've had sand control issues in the past. Anyone knows anything about water wells and sand will do not hit. And so that's creating higher operational costs. Your maintenance is a lot higher, so we've got sand control issues, of course. The tanks have to be cleaned down annually. Last time we put about ten foot of sand inside the storage tank, that's gratuitous amount. So that's obviously coming straight from the ground, right into the storage tank. So we have a problem at the water, at the storage tank. The storage tank has just ascended, we need to be attacking the problem. And that is getting clean water out of it. So we're working on plans for that. For the rehabilitation, we know that water is very, very precious. You don't know how precious it is until you open up the tap and you're just mannequin, can't take a shower. So we're looking at long-term goals, um, short-term goals. Long-term goals, initially limited conservation techniques, uh, that's just positive information. But rehab process, we're trying to gain well capacity at each well. So we're trying to delay the effects of having to move the water field. And so buying time is the secret. And so we're going to do our best to come up with a plan. We're going to develop, um, a monthly plan, try to get two to three wells rehab, uh, per month. We're going to try and do it in the fall, winter and the springtime when demand is low. So you're not having water shortages because your demand is going to drop when weather moves on. You're not washing the cars, you're not watering the plants. So that's the best way to get with the maintenance. So we've developed that plan, put it together and tried to get sand control issues done, collecting well data. Uh, we have the original well records where they were drilled from nineteen fifty and nineteen sixties. Some of these wells are very old. And of course, like anything that has been around that long, eventually it's going to give out. So we're trying to elongate that life. No one wants to hear, let's drill a new well because it's very expensive. So we don't want to be having that as the only option on the table. First, we need to collect all the data of what we have about it and then create a long-term metal plan for it. We're also setting up procedures for the Water Department to have records kept, changes that are made in the field. So, uh, Dr. Martinez is starting getting actual data from the field, knowing that this is the tank level, this is how much water they were actually pumping out of the ground, this is how much the storage tank is getting, how much we're actually consuming, what is my water loss? You don't know what the losses are. The state average is dropping five percent, what they want to see in water loss. We don't know what it's happening. So we could be pumping water out of the ground, just to return it right back to water. So it's not very efficient for the taxpayer, so we want to really get all those things. And so it's going to take the Water Department time to set up these processes. And of course, a little bit of money, um, Dr. Martinez, we're going to get some of the money that is available to us. We're going to try and use that to the best of our ability for what we think is going to have the most impact on our efficiency plan as a goal.
So as far as that, we're looking at possibly purchasing meters. I'd say possibly be best to purchase, uh, some meters for our wells. There's a few of those out there, uh, have nothing, uh, they have old ones, no longer work. So, because right now we have no clue as to how much, uh, specific wells pumping, more or less. We walk in, it doesn't work, okay, now let's call somebody. With the meters, obviously we need to see how much we're pumping. Not only do we see how much we're pumping, but we get to see, is it even functioning? We can hear something in the ground without us really having to do anything. We can see whether it's, we're starting to lose efficiency. And if we're starting to lose efficiency, okay, this well right here is starting to go out. We have to start taking, you know, remedial measures, uh, sooner and earlier. Where you can start coming up with a plan, when can we shut this one down? When can we get them to come and help us face those, you know, the problem for shit well? Kind of like what we spoke about, we're thinking about building about three wells per month if possible. That's the goal. So that, and that will be divided into divisions. So one week we can do one well, second week we can be in the other one. As far as our, our wells, the way that they're running, they're supposed to be on a scale. Usually they're on a scale. We have three sections. Usually tanks go down, one set goes up. Things go full, next set, and the next set. So they rotate. Because at the moment, they're more of this kind of long full blast. There's kind of no rest for the night. That's kind of where we have these issues of saying, right now, everything is on, they're pumping, computer goes out. Since they're already pumping, now we're having these old bugs. They'll get stuck, we try to get to them as quickly as we can. Here maybe we can kind of stop the towers from, they all the phone of the whole town. So we kind of try to face one, another one pops up. And, uh, so once again, that's just the law, communication errors in the SCADA system. But so we're, we're trying to get that one, but we, we contacted the gentleman, you can try and see whenever people get down there. So it's possible. We've already told them of our situation, that it is pretty bad that it was a wrong statement. We need to get those fixed and hopefully we can get up on his property list. We need to get those fixed and hopefully we can get up on his property list. As far as these isolation valves, maintenance and replacement plants. Looking into those. A lot of it is, is time, it's time to conserve the wells. This is something that has never been done in the past for us. For that reason. We can park, we're off of Old School, specifically just to work on that for other than these. Community members, on first, they would rather see us face the thing that turned out. But even on that note. Justin has also brought up that, seeing I didn't even know the data, they have a found exercising machines. That even allow one gentleman himself to go around and be the one to exercise the thousand. I can't explain the whole team, but one guy with a specific team, that's a lot, you know. Once again, that costs money, but that is something we can get into prices if we can even get funding for it. If it's cheap enough to develop a budget, that we can kill a bunch. As far as something like that, look into it, see if that is a viable option or. Even if we can set them kind of like how we're doing the wells and the, you know, in slower times. And even start working on sections and saying how we can work on, on either southeast section. Either way, and kind of move along throughout the, throughout the season. And that's, you know, to see what, which ones are the lines that causes the most issues. We'll start off with those, those would be the thousands of places, those would be better. Or our way down, but maybe two best. As far as our staffing and certifications, I know a lot of y'all might not know, right now, we only have two experienced workers in my department. The rest of them are a year or less. There are six of us, we're fixing a bit of seven tomorrow. So two only experience trying to, you know, help the others gain the knowledge that we have. I've been here ten years and throughout these ten years, I am still not. I don't know everything. I still learn new things every day, so imagine these new guys coming in and not knowing anything. You know, extra patience on this one, but we do, we do plan on sending the employees for training. Me myself, I also need to go for more training, but there's these new guys, they do need a little more experience. To go for their water levels, they do have to have one year's experience. Or anywhere that I can say I feel comfortable with their knowledge enough for them to go to some water classes and get their certifications. As far as the LEAK plan. I've already spoken with the mayor, the commissioners and the city manager. They had me came to come up with the LEAK plan. They want the first, second and third priorities. First priority is more or less anything that's coming out of the ground or things that affect the customer's bill. Something that's actually the. Stuff that's hitting the road, the big ones that we see. So second priority is more or less any other date that you see. Just kind of chilling in the alley, you know, making as much damage, but still nuisance for some. Third priority is large. Small incented meter box is something that most people of adults see. But little issues that we know as we go around, we do our review for it. So maybe we'll just go, we brought these down. As long as it's not affecting the customer under the bill or it's making their bill go up, it is those people who are the. Do kind of have, have LEAK reports done for those, so that we do have. This setup. Are to show we've done this many LEAKs. And this is all the parts that we use, not only is it good to say for us to know how many have been done, but it also even also in. Same well, so and so many parts for use and we can restart them.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, we got a couple. How many existing wells are we figuring out from right now? Eighteen. Size pipe that we're.
Four inch. Size of the wells.
Are you asking about?
I'm asking about the lines.
Oh, okay, so you're talking about out of a well. Four inch, four inches six inch.
What kind of pressure, what kind of spurs, like four meters custom to know?
We look at a different type of meter, so since there's sand inside the water. So if anything catches to them, it's a sand blaster constantly on something. So anything that is inside of that meter that is mechanical or just in the way, it will eventually break it to shore and wear it out. So we're looking at a different type of, what they refer to as a electromagnetic meter. And it has no moving parts on it, it just uses the flow of water to conduct itself and we get more accurate reads with less part failure. So we're trying to find one that the water department will enjoy being used and operate. We can teach the whole group and find out one part, that will be the one that we try to push and swap out every week. And she will cycle the bearing. If we can fit, because it's, it's a different style, they use a saddle type meter. Throw a hole, I throw a meter slash clamp onto it and operate through the flange style, so. Got a reference to it, the top out, they just discharge it with a flat knife. So that's also a body condition, so every step has been. Costs to see whether it would be because the ones that do something about the past, all cheaper. But for us to completely remove what we've had and put in new parts into it, trying to see whether it's a viable option for us.
Right, if the pipe is still in good condition, I think you're going to take into consideration that. And another question, what does upgrade in the SCADA system and all?
First, I've never seen it, I know it exists, I know there's got your radio on every water well building. And I know my previous line of work, we removed all the options, I don't know if it's a licensed radio system, it's unlicensed. Their first here is a multi-point to one communication system, I don't know where that, anything about it is. My previous line of work was IT work, and so I just made a few suggestions about having a redundant command and control server, just have a one. Didn't even have a battery backup on it, so we lose power in that building, we lose command and control. That's not really good, and we need to turn something off more often. So there's severe flaws in the command and control system inside of SCADA. Nothing to do with the tuning, just its existence has flaws in it already, so there's different things in there that I'm familiar with, but. There's outside of the soap, while applying, I'm going to look on our site.
I'm just asking because that should probably be something that needs to be looked into and addressed. SCADA systems rolling is still good for SCADA.
And maybe Paul will involve me too. It works now, I'll put a word in.
Oh, for sure, SCADA is everywhere, it's definitely the new thing, but it's like anything else.
Well, he's newer, it's a lot.
Yes.
Can I add to your one and two list? Since we just got all the fire hydrants tested, get with him and see what needs, what big parts were removed in them.
And that was good.
Fire hydrants, he just had them all tested and he can go over it, be what needs one of them.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, we did receive a approximately three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a threat environmental problem. To address our water system, so that's, that's the reason. We were notified the other day, I'll be bringing that to the commission in the next week, so that's very helpful in upgrading our system. But again, approximately three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I appreciate it, gentlemen. One thing I'd like to mention is like the mayor mentioned earlier, I know we have all these management staff. This board's commission is terrific. Our objective is to ensure that we provide the tools, the training and mold you in the right direction to, to ensure that we fix the problem right this time around. So I just want to say thank you to WHB for stepping in and as well to Bernard for stepping up to that position. Thank you guys, and in the right direction for us.
I just want to mention something to commissioners, I'm talking about the valve maintenance plant, this is very important. As you see, the issue food ran into the Main Street project, those valves were unexercised and they weren't taken care of. And it created a whole lot of problems.
It cost us thirty-five thousand each.
It cost a whole lot each, and there's still more to come on that, so that's why, you know, having him have somebody who can do that. Tool, just so he, one person can do that program, it's very important.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, remember the big mission at this time, next item is the discussion of finding a zoning board.
So we have a vacancy in our planning and zoning board, if you guys have any people that would like to be on that board, please let me know, your name and a phone number. Hopefully we'll have some people, so in the next city commission, we can appoint someone to that board.
Thanks. Any questions? Okay, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, the next item is the discussion of intersection and deer drop in North Main. This is Paul.
Mayor, Commissioner, so I have a couple of different concepts for you to think about on this. This needs, this internal lane there at Deer Drop and they're taking the highway by the hospital. So the center, it's three lanes, center lane, of course, is your turn to go eastbound, your right lane there is the turn to go, of course, westbound. We have, as you brought up, the issue of trucks turning in off of the highway there and making that center lane very dangerous to be in. So I have a concept drawing, I have a couple of different concepts that we can look at. And I'm talking to, I'm getting prices on this from the Sandbar, which does the road shaping and stuff. To just block off that center lane there, just. At that area to keep it from, and so that way, the, the far lane would be, you would turn right or left from that, you would turn east or west. And then that would also allow that center lane to be a swing lane for trucks turning in there, if there's no vehicles in that lane. Does that make sense? Actually, we cannot put fire hydrants there, and that's why the state would not put a turn lane there, is because the trucks within accidentally ran a fire hydrant. So that's why it's, I mean, and I can get with the state on more of this if you guys want me to, but when we look at the next one, was to actually close off. Well, the, the next concept I had was to actually make that entire deer drop, instead of it being three lanes the whole way, just make it two lanes. And that would also create more area therefore, that we would still block off this intersection area, so cars would stay in that center. Would it just be in two lanes, so it was just, do we want to just work on the intersection or do we want to redo all of deer drop? So I can get some quotes to bring back to you on this.
I just, I don't, I like what you have right here, just want to know that, just to ensure that nobody. Will, I mean, that way they have plenty of room to pull in to there and just, and incoming cars or outgoing cars, they'll, they'll. Stay to the, to the right.
They'll stay to the right and make their turn, be their two.
That's simple, simple math right there, so. Then look at this cost, it would be to make major changes.
So the only concern I have is, and I really want to do what the school does and put the mill things up, but I'm going to be the guy that takes out all those old mill things there. Because that's going to be me that can drive. So I, I like this concept, you know, the, the thing would be is if you. Because we're creatures of habit, or I am, I don't know about the rest of the world, but I am a creature of habit. And I know that as you come into that, you know, you want to immediately go into that and if you see it, even if it's painted over due to the. Few people in the world that are less considerate of others and different things like that, somebody's going to take that opportunity to run out there. So I just wonder if there was a way right around, because by the time you swing through, you know, there's, there's a portion where you still need to turn into the ASF, A, whatever that office is right there. And so I just wonder if you could put, you know, like the little cones, probably poles right there, push the traffic over, but leave it wide enough to some days, even the, the far lane is where I end up.
Well, that's when we actually do this, I'll actually go out and get the actual measurements and there could be some posts, like at the school where they have that control lane. That could be something that could be put there also, yes.
You know, it'd be nice because it would really help the flow of the traffic, you don't have to worry about, is there going to car be coming in at your head on? I don't know how many of.
Well, that's what me and Sandbar didn't want to do too much in getting into real like designs until you guys kind of decided if you wanted something like this.
I think that's, that's perfect because that gives you an extra lane to swing out in and, I mean. I've taken out most of that curve right there with that three axle trailer, so.
We share the issues with the chief.
You said intersection every day. Mr. Gannon, it's a big problem. Mr. Gannon, and you're referring to putting up something a little ways back.
Yeah, further back.
Further back, yeah, so, so.
Like some poles, the USDA entrance mark.
Yeah, just not.
Well, just basically force the traffic over, not because I guarantee you, some of the, the wider loads and different things, they're still going to try to push people out of that far lane. You got a five axle trailer or anybody moving a drilling rig through here, they're going to take that out, but by the time she's got it far back, that she's got that drawn back in there. You know, most of the people are already turning to, that truck will already be straight backed out by that time. Yeah, that, that's just, this is no issue right here, it's because when you judge the guys going for the stone and everything else, if you're over here. It's, it's horrible because you can't see what they're coming out of there for anyway, but. So, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Junior?
Yes, Junior Hernandez is mayor's commission, mayor's commission. If you guys move for poles from the back, you're going to get in the way of the entrance for the ambulance to get into that.
I'll make sure that that's.
Okay. Two lanes. Because there's three entrances in the back of the hospital, but they don't.
There's actually only one that's up at Deer Drop.
They don't use that.
No, they do not, the only one is the EMS entry and then the next one's a public one, that third one was cut off by the hospital itself, it's no longer. So there is only one public entry on Deer Drop and the one emergency. And I will keep those in high consideration and go over with that.
Thanks. Any other questions? No questions, city manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, we're inside in the discussion of the report and the audit. Mayor, commissioners, I inserted this. Basically because we don't get to meet and talk, and so I felt like this was a point to bring it up for discussion. We had had on there also some resolution items that would follow up with this, but after we, after talking to our, our city auditor. She had me change the language of this, and I appreciate all of the groups that are here, and I don't want you to think that I wasted your time because. What I, what I'm going to present hopefully will address, help out a lot of this and it will expedite it and it will also ease the minds. When I spoke to Ms. Willby, first of all, she said that what we were asking on this is certainly recommended and certainly within our rights. She said that, she gave an example, the United Way, anytime they give money, you have to. She said is an AUP and it's agreed upon procedure. And so she says, strike the word loud. That was what her first point was. Is let's not call this an audit because we as, you as the city have to be audited because you're a public entity and you have a lot. You're dealing with entities that you give money to, then they don't have the same restrictions. However, the goal is that public money is used for the intent that it was sought after. And therefore you have procedures, you, you as city and you and the entities come together and you come up with, and she gave some examples, and this is not an inclusive list, not comprehensive, and it, it's just some examples that we can talk about or either. She said, first of all, you're going to use an independent and it can be a CPA firm. She said, now, independent means you use, not only use for bookkeeping or to do your regular billing or whatever you do for the bar, but another CPA firm firm that's qualified to be an audit and use them. And it can be from the city, it can be from the public, it can be from a local. And it doesn't have to be what we, you, the city, uh, use or require to meet the state approval. So items to look at, basically a total cash balance, cash in, cash out. And for, for the entities that are here, that does not mean looking at where the cash went. As long as the books balance, thank you. You know, it's, it's a simple, you can say it's a finance allotted, but it's not. How, where were those funds supposed to go? How, how were they allotted or anything like that? She also brought up internal controls and that starts with your bylaws. So you have, you want to say a bylaw audit, okay? Make sure that they're reasonable. Make sure that there's nothing that's discriminatory. Things along this line. All of this from the inception is to protect the entity. It is not for the city to be delving around in anybody's business. So, and, and I spoke earlier, succession, whenever a board has a big change of, you have a bunch of new people in there. This is already in place. We as the commission need to be looking at this because when we have, you know, the next election, it is possible, probably not probable, that we will have three new commissioners. And so that would be three business, I would group this up there and they would be, they don't know what to do. So it is a way that this governing board, who is fiduciary, I'm sorry, responsible for everything that goes on this city, we all know that we can be sued. It also can entities. And so whenever you sign on as the director, you sign on that you are going to be responsible, financially responsible for that group that you're a part of. So she said, this, this is a way that you, it starts out in the beginning, the first, the first draft that we probably adhere to is going to be a rough draft. It's going to try to encompass everything it can, but again, we're going to have things that are, are missed. They slip through the cracks, whatever. She said, it is a living document year to year. It may grow and may shrink depending on how thoroughly. She said, a lot of times you'll set up and you will make, make it too encompassing. Back to, you know, everybody says, well, what did they do here? What did they do there? She said, it becomes unnecessary. But in speaking with her, we had a lengthy conversation. And she specifically said, and I'm repeating her words, she said, at the city, you have two groups that cause concern, with her, and she specifically named them all. She said, the Chamber of Commerce and the agency. And she said, these, uh, the museum and Main Street, congratulations. Y'all had, she gave y'all a lot of kudos. And she said, it's just because there are certain things in the other two that are agreed upon that don't necessarily work with an audit. And so this is with her ability and one of our community partners also suggested that there's a gentleman in town that this is ripe to be, this is what he does. And recommended, you know, we will give that information out to proceed to develop these AUPs. So that was the reason in, in talking with Ms. White, our commissioner White and Mr. Eo that in, we started, I'm sorry, that we pulled it from this, this particular meeting. But because fiscal year 2022 is behind us, we are in our, fixing to be in our audit procedures as our financial director says. So this is a good time for the commission and these entities to come together and come up with an AUP. And she said, I asked, give me a timeline. She said, there's no way that you can complete this in six weeks or so. So we put a timeline together. Now, the first of the timeline was to basically start today. The commissioner White, what, what was our, what did we propose? And I'm going to, at that, at that point, I'm going to back off and I'm going to ask any of the entities to come up and add their discussion and also anything that's been said at this point.
We're hoping to develop, approve and deliver to the groups our AUP plan by October 10th. Of, you know, just an accounting of their cash in, cash out, and their ethical checks and balances is the way to handle the money. And then by our next meeting, the 24th, we would like to have your choice of your CPA or who is going to provide this, where you cannot be the one that knows your book, has to be outside, so that we have time to approve that. And then we're going to factor in holidays and everything and come back maybe January 23rd with the copy provided to us of your AUP.
Mayor, commission, my name is Junior Hernandez, I'm the current vice president for the DC. I'm going to hand you guys a ballot sheet of our, logar fund and also a copy of the 495 ordinance. As you can see in, I'll start off as, you can see in the ballot sheet from the last one that we give y'all a month ago. Ray started logar fund by $35,000. That was due to our distributed amount given for, for the month of June. But in reference to what Mrs. White, commissioner White was saying, if we look at page eight, it states that all revenues dedicated and pledged to the funding and financing of economic development projects shall be deposited in a separate account. One of each separate projects can may be expended only as provided in LITA and the statewide economic development by that side. The city shall provide an annual independent audit in accordance with Audit Act 12-6-11 NMSA 1978 of each special fund or account.
Yes, and I hope that we are speaking to you guys about that.
So what I, what I'd like to know, you know, before whatever we discuss is, uh, discuss, is that going to be our responsibility being that an ordinance states that it's the city's responsibility?
AUP is not an audit. It's just looking at how you, how you, you know, who signs your checks? Who gives out money? Do you have two people doing this? Do you have someone watching you while you do this? It's just a little watch.
You know what?
It's not a punishment. We don't trust.
No, 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 I, I understand.
Let me, let me put one in there, point two, Junior said, I think Junior has a good point too because everything that they recommend to us, we have to approve. So it, it goes twice. It's not like the chambers, not like Main Street. So what they, so what we do, it's our responsibility to do that audit because we're, we're the ones making the final decision on how that money is spent.
On, on the logar. So on the actual LITA fund that is held in a separate account by the city.
This is more, you're, you're.
This is our.
Chapter, not so much, your funding, how their office operates and does their accounting, are there.
So policies and procedures is what you guys want audited. Okay.
But the thing about it too is, it says back to the. Do we have the right to, to tell you how you, you like your funds? We understand our conscious, our tax response are the. What, what, the company, but do we, and that would be legal because do we have the right to step in, say, because they have a, so they, they receive funding from other, other, other areas. Do we have a right to step?
Currently, we take $35,000, the city takes $35,000 and funds the, the Lovington EDC out of the logar fund. That is 100% taxpayers' money from the LITA account, from the one A account. So it gets transferred into a different account, which is our operating, operating account. We then seek funding from the state level, the county level, and through memberships. So we have two different accounts. I think every other organization has one account.
It isn't fully financial. It's just how your group runs it. So how you manage your things. Yeah, like we came to my house and said, let me just see how you're getting your billings. And I showed you, kind of more or less that, not really, you know, we want your cash to balance out at the end, but not necessarily, we want to know what's in there or how you're using it. We just want to know how you're doing it to make sure if someone is embezzling or something.
So policing the police.
Yeah, because, because like he said, our work goes in and out all the time. So somewhere, someone's going to forget. They need to check on that. So if we just put this in here every year, it's handed in, it's checked on, and then we just keep going forward.
I think we have to have certain guidelines, different from the chamber and Main Street.
I, I, I agree. I, I agree. I, I think that we need to be excluded from any audit by, you know, you know, we got up on the board here, also we want a commissioner appointed to our board currently.
That's our mood. We're not there yet.
Okay.
Let's figure out what's going on. Yes, you have a mayor on the board and we're not there yet. So if we find out things are unethical, maybe we need to.
So what, what, what do we, what do you, what do we need to do at the Lovington EDC?
You find CPA and ask them for an A.
We have a CPA.
Well, not the one that does your books. You have to find an outside.
Okay, so is that going to be paid by the city?
And we're going to talk about, I think that was part of the negotiation.
Well, everything that has been part of the conversation tonight, because we were at the, again, our fiscal year started July 1st and our fiscal year started July 1st, we were cut $15,000. Now we're asking to, you know, incur, we, we tried that, we balanced our budget, we made changes, balance our budget. So we've got to come up with $8,000, $6,000, $10,000, whatever this six week audit costs for something that was brought by the city commission, I think the city, then separate from the logar fund needs to cover the cost. That shouldn't be a burden on each organization.
See, and that's what we're, that's why we're discussing this, just, you know, what we need to do on our end, what we need to do on ours, and then we're going to come up with an action plan and see if we approve it. If we approve it, we'll hand it to you. You know, that's what we're, we're building this new thing.
Build, building the plan that's in there.
Yeah, but currently Junior's, it hasn't been approved by the board. So it's going to be a lot of this stuff.
So is this what we're doing tonight as we're discussing this?
Yes.
Okay, so, so, what do I need to just, my part right here, right now, what do I need?
You walked in late after you moved everything from here because I didn't do the right stuff. So we're.
So is the question going on now?
Question on me, yes, sir.
So what do we need to do about?
And I think there would be a lot of discussion.
Just what you're doing. You're giving us your opinion on what you think and we're going to take that and then we're going to go to the next one and drop that down. And we're going to pull it all together when we get all the, until we, until we can.
Mr. Gannon, Junior.
No, I'm just trying to sort of.
So, on what I was saying, you know, put it all together. It's going to be a lot of going back and forth. I, I, I agree with you that I think your, your, in your terms, it's going to seem a little bit different. By structure other than the other two, because the city also does an audit on the revenue that comes into taxpayers. And we also sign off on that, that, that payment as well. So it's not just you, it's us. So.
So as of tonight, we have no deadline?
No.
No, sir. It was just that virtual, how we'd like to get this to move through.
So are we, we going to meet as a board?
Paul is saying, I think you'd be.
We still need to do your workshop. We still need to do that and then we can.
Who's going to coordinate the workshop?
Probably Dr. Martinez.
Mayor, please.
Well, fortunately, I have a very, one of the top CPAs in the area that is very well appointed, but whispering in my ear over there, you need to do this. So let me tell you what you said. Need to put together a work group that involves at least one individual from each entity. And then probably need to get with Dr. Martinez and have someone assigned to that. And then I would say invite the commission to be a part of that. And if we feel like we're going to have a great, a full turnout or at least three members, then let's have that do the workshop or an open meeting that is dedicated to that and move this thing along. What, what commissioner White and I were able to basically determine is we want to get it started just because it's the first time and we, it may take the rest of this fiscal year to get it to a completion, but we want to complete 2022 before we are into 2023. And one of the presidents of one of the groups suggested that. And, and you know, I said, all I'm trying to do is move it forward so that we can get this thing started. She said, well, you know, as long as we do it this year, and you know what? I don't disagree with her. So I don't think it's going to be as involved as we're, as it was blown up to be. And, and I will take full responsibility. I mean, when I put it on there, I really didn't know what I was doing. I hadn't had a chance. In order to get it to commission tonight, you have to get something. So anyway, I think that we, you should just move forward and maybe put together that particular group and then have the city put in who needs to be there and again, try to do, get everybody there at that time. And it doesn't have to be just one person from the groups, but at least one person.
Thank you. I want to allow Main Street and, and the chamber board to make their presentation, but make it short afterwards. We will ask the city manager to work up three work sessions and we can all attend work sessions and be advertised as work sessions and work this out. Because if not, we'll be discussing this pretty late evening. So I think we just need to move forward on this. Thank you.
Mayor, commissioners, I just want to tell you, I've spoken with the majority of my board and we all agree being that we're a, we're a lack of better work, public service entity, I guess. We do agree with transparency. However, we have looked into the cost before we were talking, not now we're talking AUPs. Thank God. The costs, well, I'll get into that in this room here, but I'm just going to read this real quick. We kind of did this together on behalf of the Lovington Main Street board and staff. And we'd like to thank you for your commitment. And we'd like to thank you for your commitment to the veteran Lovington. Lovington Main Street is dedicated to the revitalization of downtown Lovington and we have always appreciated your support and partnership. Our organization has maintained their reputation for the last ten consecutive years. It's brought in over a million dollars in grant money. The accreditation process includes two standing certificates from the New Mexico Secretary of State and Attorney General Office. Current IRS file filing, economic transformation strategic plan, board bylaws and policies, annual budgets and site visits. Mexico Main Street can request any additional documentation to ensure we are aware of the accreditation. As a nonprofit, we understand the importance of checks and balances, transparency and accountability. We have received the amendments and would like to propose the following updates. Section 4.0, annual audit report, Main Street will submit an agreed upon procedure or A U P every three years to the city of Lovington as recommended by CPAs. Lovington Main Street will submit an A U P for 2021 by December 1, 2022, which will be paid with funds provided through the professional service agreement. Additionally, we are requesting our funding be restored to 50,000 for the fiscal year 22, 23. 25,000, which will come from the general fund, the 25,000, which comes as a pass through tax to Lovington. Audits are extremely expensive and can cost up to 15,000 and averages at 13,000. However, an agreed upon procedure will only cost about five, six thousand. This is what we're gonna do. An A U P follows procedures like an audit, but on a limited scale. It can be used to identify specific problems that require immediate action. For performing an A U P engagement, CPA will provide an opinion based on the findings. A U P engagements may target specific financial data such as accounts payable, accounts receivable, or related foreign transactions. Non-financial information such as a review of internal controls or compliance with royalty agreements. A specific financial statement such as the income statement or balance sheet, or even the complete set of financial statements. A U P engagements have several advantages. They can be performed at any time during the year and they can be relied upon by their partners. You also have the flexibility to choose only those procedures you feel are necessary. So A U P engagements can be cost effective. Specifically, A U P engagements can be useful in these situations. Management and accounting due diligence. When a business owner suspects an employee of misrepresenting financial results, you determine compliance with specific regulatory requirements such as the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act or the Federal Information Security Management Act or FISB. In addition, lenders or franchisers may request an A U P engagement if they have doubtful questions about a company's financials or the effectiveness of its internal controls, or if they want to check on the progress of a distressed company's turnaround. Additionally, as a nonprofit, we believe it would not be, if I'm sure, responsible for spending our limited funds in this matter. Thank you for aiding Lovington Main Street and our efforts to ensure economic stability and foster a center of activity in the hard work community. We look forward to continuing our partnership on future projects. So I'm happy with what you've done.
I'm happy with what you did.
When I first heard the board audit, almost fell out.
We all, I understand.
You heard what I have to say. I agree with what you're saying on A U P.
And I will tell you, you, I will, I will repeat, I cannot repeat exactly what I heard on your side. But her numbers that she threw out there are in line with what you said. Yes, five or six thousand. So uh, you know, we will get, when we develop, when we get to whatever, and your CPA, whoever you choose to do that. Then all we're gonna do is we're going to approve your choice unless we have a reason not to. Uh, I mean, a, a valid reason not to. And then at that point, we're going to discuss and try to compensate you, especially this first year and ongoing years, because that was a recommendation from someone that I really trust, said that that will be proper in this particular.
Did you hear you talking 100% opposition?
I cannot speak for the commission. I can't hold your mind. I would like to.
Well, that's all right.
Well, it's more of a avenue.
Yes, the reason I bring it up is we were dropped down to 35,000 in our contract. So funds, you know, despite everywhere else, funds are taxed. Other questions, Kelly?
Thank you, thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Joe.
My name is David Munoz. I'm the Chamber President for the three weeks. City was kind of first was asking for an audit. My thing is that I'd like to get started on my audit so I can use any local CPA.
Yes, sir. Well, you'd like to, so we don't start.
I mean, my thing is, you know, I don't, I don't wanna wait till at the end of the year, if y'all want it done, let's get it done, let's get it over with. I mean, there's no.
You don't oversell that payment immediately. Wait, wait, wait.
So you're gonna give, give us a format, say, you know, what you want to.
I think. And you'll, that's what the work session is for, for us to come up with agreement on, on what the expectations of both parties are.
All together.
Put it in documentation, approved by the board, presented back. It's a little process, but checks and balances are there. You get what you need, we get what we need.
You know, you know, I won't, you know, for the audit or whatever you outside. Can't sit here and complain about anything other than just, I wanna be a team of lights and I expect the table to be up far and I wanna be questioned by, you know. Wanna be up there. If you have any questions, call me personally. Before you can get a call to my executive director, our director, Isabella. You know, just let her know whenever you outside the need. So we can be present, represent the Chamber very well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So I guess board would be agreement. Yes. Mayor, the chairman, the board.
I can probably talk a lot, but uh, Commissioner Gandy doesn't, I'm just gonna say, you know, if they're looking at this and all of this was brought up because, and, and I'm talking about the cost. It, I think the city is gonna do its very best and we won't know what these costs are until we get quotas back or from their R and P's. So, but in the best interest of the city, I think this is money well spent just to so that we can proceed forward and continue the work that they're doing and continue contributing to them so that they can do the work that they are, they're an extension of the city and they're providing services that we are not able to. So there's no reason to give them, first of all, any type of funding that owed from years past and then incur, ask them to incur a further expense. So anyway, that will come about later and until we get to that point, we can't make a real decision on that. So I just say, let, let's just make sure we proceed on this path. Other than thanks for the mission for entertaining all of us.
So I believe the board will be in agreement to uh, give direction to the city manager to set up three work sessions, one for Main Street, one for E D C, and one for Chamber.
You need to include the museum.
And the museum, yes. So it'd be four, city, city.
I just have one more thing to say. The executive director at Lovington Main Street, he actually monthly reports and emails it to each commissioner. So I don't know how many of you all actually read them.
Quarterly to the city manager.
Uh, quarterly to the city manager. You don't send it to.
They're gonna say the right thing.
Yeah.
Which I like to receive whenever.
Good luck.
Quarter, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Actually.
Yes, sir.
Um, no, but if you could make it available where I could come pick it up. Um, we've had some issues before, so um, yeah, that would be great. That's sounding horrible, but.
Put it on that. Now I still have a motion.
Let's make motion for resolution 2022-083, full of name change on liquor license for South Indian Investors LLC.
Second. May the second. Is that you, Shannon?
Oh, yes. It's just the liquor license that South Indian Investors calls. It's just for a name change. It's still be the, it'll still be South Indian Investors LLC. But it's the transfer of underlying ownership parties to all change. As required, you had been, had been published, why? And require that state. And just ask you to read it. Read it.
Turn and discuss about the board. Pro call, Shannon.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes.
Yes.
Mayor, so, he, Commissioner Gandy?
Yes. No. Oh, that's. Do I have a motion? Actually, I'm staying. Or is he gonna say he's not here? Oh, yeah, he's not here. He's already out. Rehealed somewhere in that tire. Are you kidding? The mayor voted, what, to make a motion for the council?
Thank you.
And that's the second.
I'm our side. There's, there's pretty much fifteen. I don't know if you guys have any questions.
No, these guys might.
I have a question. Vendor number 11242, James Cook in Madison. What's that?
Yeah. James Cook. I mean, that's a lot of money something.
I think that's the wastewater.
It's a, it's really look like they have the works. Oh, yeah. That's wastewater. It's from the.
Dirty water? Fortress.
Yes, they threw the wastewater when Brad was here, he was doing C O. And he was coding stuff wrong, so we pinned him on that. So this was a past invoice that we were to pay. And you have a firm, yes, so they can follow up.
So it's just two past invoices?
They contacted me and sent it all to Ms. O'Fair. Ms. O'Fair took care of it and she got with Ron and Ron had to reissue all those C Os to get those paid because he had coded stuff.
I didn't know, so I'm trying to ask you.
Yes, sir.
Was it taken or whatever they wanted to do? Yeah.
Yeah. Did you ever get the? It's all, yes.
Thank you so good.
Counsel. Counsel are approved. Shannon, pro call.
Commissioner White, yes. Your Philadelphia V I?
Yes. 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 Somebody mark it down. This means it's, thank you. I need to make it down there.